All this meeting of the King William Board Supervisors to work. Mr. Branch, if you can call the board, please.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yeah.
Mr. Hodges.
Yeah.
Mr. Barber.
Yeah.
Mr. Maureen.
Yeah.
I would like to join us and please join me in a very second morning of the sun following those reasons.
Mr. Chair, if I could, a special request.
Yes, sir.
In the memory of Rodney Williams' family, he was a matinee rescue squad. He was in a horrific accident up here. And for my sister and her family who were unvaccinated COVID patients right now.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
To the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God.
Okay, that sounds a lot better than I don't think.
No, any comments? The meeting adjutant's evening, we have a solid agenda, no minus.
I'm going to approve you.
Second. Properly moved and seconded, Ms. Branch.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Barber.
Hi.
Mr. Maureen.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Okay, we're going into the public comment period. Just a reminder that individuals have a period of three minutes. If you're with a group, you have five minutes. Please call to the podium, state your name, address, and we'll go ahead and open the public commentary. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Greenwood, remind me, this is for non-public area items, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Mason, and I'm at 392 Roman Trail in the Blue River District. I just want to give an add of weight to the regional animal shelter. I've been here for six years, I've adopted six animals from them, spent a lot of time with animals, like I was a veterinarian in the area. And they do a phenomenal job at trying to match animals to people, give care to animals, give appropriate care to animals, and take care of the animals in our community. And I don't, but Lori and her crew down there just care so much about those animals and what happens. And I just want to give an add of weight to that, thank you.
Thank you. And I did, Mr. Branch, you can take it and put it in there.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Robert Earhart, Fifth District. Normally, this is the peak time of year for King William Emergency Ministries to receive funds as a Christmas celebration at one of our area churches. This is a great opportunity and charity for supporting families impacted by fire, tornadoes, et cetera, in our county. The last time that they formally met was 2019 at Dula. To anybody listening, I would encourage you to take this opportunity to donate to King William Emergency Ministries, it's a great organization. Also, Webster's defines sleepy as an adjective, ready to fall asleep or sluggish. Profane, however, is a verb defined by wrong, vulgar, or unworthy usage. Section 5, one of the Board's Code of Conduct prohibits use of threatening or profane language. The adjective sleepy does not prohibit it. Probably not ironic that the past chair seeks to restrict public descriptors, when he himself was notified on February 8th that citizens were blocked from a private Facebook group administered by himself and Supervisor Maureen. Perhaps even more apprehensible is the fact that Supervisor Maureen knowingly administered a private Quid group for two years, using official business. During those two years, at least six people have been identified as blocked or removed, infringing on their civil rights to speech and expression. These actions, in my opinion, are in direct conflict with the Supreme Court ruling in Davidson versus Randall.
Anyone else like to speak this evening? Ms. Branch, anyone online? Will that close the public comment period? Gentlemen, any questions, comments, observations, or the consent agenda this evening?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Go through the consent agenda, Ms. Branch.
Mr. Barber.
Hi.
Mr. Maureen.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Okay, moving on, Mr. Ashcraft, this is your first opportunity, go ahead and say it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. McRoberts, ladies and gentlemen. Gentlemen, in your packet was a county administrator's report, and at your seat is an updated report. And you'll see that in the context that is then highlighted is what has been added from the older, from the previous report, which was sent to you last week to, uh, to tonight. Don't want to cover everything specifically that's in the report, but I would like to be a little, a little more general with, or specific with some of the things that are going on. The report starts out with your meeting dates in January for the most part. We certainly want the public to know that as well. And we've added a few meetings that maybe you weren't typically on your calendar, which you like. They involve King William County as a whole, so we wanted to add those to the agenda. And we'll highlight those more as that goes along. Also have a personnel listing, positions that have been filled in the last three, four weeks. And we'll continue to update that with every, with every report. Starting with some notes, we want to make sure that the public knows that we have applied for an extension for our annual audit. There's nothing wrong, it's just a matter of getting the accounts reconciled to make sure that it's orderly to the auditor. They've had a chance to review that. We certainly would have liked to have had it at the deadline that is required, that the state has granted us permission to extend that. And we hope to have it done no later than February 28th, or we anticipated being, been before that. The Treasurer, our Finance Director, and certainly the School Division, all three of those are working very closely together. The Commission of Revenue is for the most part done her part, but she has a role in that play as well. So we feel good about getting that issue behind us. I want to give a plug to Congressman Whitman, who's been a good public servant for this region for a long time. There's a piece of legislation that needed a sponsor that would help counties such as ours and towns, that's a good point, to be a little more flexible with the federal money they receive. You know, right now, sometimes our hands are tied, or deadlines aren't always being able to be met. And the Congressman has agreed to sponsor that legislation that came out of the Plating, the Plating District. And it would be good to see his name on it, and he's doing it on behalf of our request. So we're, we're happy to, to see him respond to that. I guess, going back maybe a year and a half or two, years ago, there was, there was a space need in the back room next to the county administrator's office, in the break room, for, uh, to put up a wall, a couple walls, and take what at that time was a conference room, and make it into offices. Now Deputy County Administrator Steve Hudson's has, had reviewed that prior to my arrival, and, you know, I've had chances to chat on it. We'd like to return that back to a conference room for a couple reasons. One, the Board does not have a place to hold its, its closed sessions and other, other meetings that you might have with constituents in the old building. It would also be another resource for staff, where we could have meetings of five people or less. Obviously, when you get more than that in a, in a smaller office, it's not always accessible. We can do it with in-house personnel, there would be no, there would be no money needed for that. We may, we may need to purchase a few chairs to go along with the conference table, which we have in different pieces in a couple of different offices, though we can put that together and put it in there. We'd, we'd like your blessing on that. If you don't want to do that tonight and just think about it, just let me know. But I just feel like it would be a good use of space. Right now, it's not, it's, uh, it's got, it's got some boxes in it, and so it's one of them catch-all places where you put things when, when you need it. And it'll help us to, to clean out the area a little bit as well. So I would ask, I would ask for your blessing at some point for us to move forward with that. You concede that.
Yes. The Chair, I do have a question, do you want to, what happened to the chair or something?
I'm going to refer back to someone I used to work with, Ms. Branch, she probably wasn't here long enough either. Ms. Branch, do you remember?
I know some are in storage, but I'm not sure if all of them were stored. You know, Frankie and maintenance crew are, will go through both storage units, make sure what we've got.
Well, we have the table, and you're saying, it's got to be some expensive materials of some sort, but you're thinking it's minimal?
I think it's minimal. Those, those partition walls are put in on top of carpeting, and they go up to the ceiling tile, so there's no tie-ins to anything. We've already got surplus tile, carpet tiles, from when it was put in to begin with, to patch any places. All electrical runs are coming through the ceiling and down, so there, there isn't anything to pull out walls, really, it's just remove walls.
That's all I can.
Could you go ahead and go? I'm looking at the.
I'm good with.
You have a question also, that I know it used to be the library for the board and staff too, hell, but for our attorney, we had it one time. Do you know that the bookcases are still in storage, or could be brought back, or any of those books, all that reference material?
That certainly could be something that we could push over. We don't have any, any idea yet about what we were going to put in it, other than the, and we went up to include a monitor that I think we, we probably already have in storage for presentations and, and things like that that might be necessary.
Is, is the victim still in there or what?
Not in there, but there are pieces of there.
Yeah.
I think they have to put it back together, but it's all here.
Yes, I agree. Thank you very much, I think you'll find it to be a good, a good use of, of space when we complete it. I see Chief Brady in the audience, and I'm going to thank him and, and Deborah Hansen, Ms. Ratchett and I went out and, and met with them on December the 16th, just to discuss ways, kind of meet and greet, ways to get to know each other a little better. I came away with a, a great sense of admiration for what, for what they do out there. And it just will give us an opportunity, I think, more to have a more productive relationship moving forward. And we intend to do that with the other two tribes as, as time allows us in the next weeks to come. King William County has returned to a high transmission area for, uh, the variant, certain COVID. We're averaging about 11 new cases a day, and that was an average, a seven-day average, as the statistics that came in on December the 26th. Since this February of 2020, we have had 2,348 cases. We've had 71 folks who require hospitalization and 27 deaths. We have been hit particularly hard within our employee base here recently. We have had a couple, either, you know, employees who have been exposed or have gotten COVID, or we've had their families that have been exposed, and they have since got COVID. So we've been very, very careful, we're following all the guidelines, we're masking, of course, keeping our social distance. And just trying to continue to advocate and urge folks to, uh, to get the vaccine. You know, the science is telling us, all the health people are telling us that the vaccine is the, all vaccines plus the booster is the principal way to try to battle this thing, even though it's been proven that you can have all that and you can still get it again. But it's still, it, it's like an insurance policy, it helps, no matter what you can, what you can do. So we'll continue to keep you updated on that. Couple other things, Mr. Chairman, our county newsletter launched on December the 17th. We hope to have that out after the holidays weekly. I think it's, you know, it's, as you can tell from those who read it, it's just a short snippet of activities that are going on within our government and within the community. We want to continue to, to be a voice for those. I appreciate all, all events that are going on in the county, if folks would let us know. We have numerous ways that we can get those out for, for people to, to be part of that. And finally, and I say this for last because I think it's the most significant, the Board members, I believe, are more than going. And Mr. Hudson's is going to be attending a meeting on January the 24th with state officials and representatives from all points, and also other officials that were involved with DXCD for the grant that we just received for broadband. And that will be the beginning of the first steps towards getting this project moving to the next phase, and getting fiber to homes and people hooked up, and communications improving from, from border to border. And congratulations again on all the work that was done by, by this Board, by staff. Mr. Hudson, a lot to do with the grant application. Because broadband, even though it's a buzzword around, there are still communities that are struggling to put it together. And you've been able to work with, with your partners, the COOP, Dominion, and now, of course, all points. To put all that together, a partnership that's going to really serve this community, gives us our kudos for that. So congratulations. I'll stop there, before I get into my next part of my report, if anybody has anything that's in the report, if they'd like to have a question, yes.
Dealing with the dates, and it's probably correct, but generally, we get a handful of the ponies, but I see that the school board meeting on January the 18th at, at, oh, that's the West Point, I'm sure.
Yeah, I went ahead and, and added the West Point meetings.
That's good.
You know, I believe that, you know, we were up there last week, with, Ms. Graham and I, we're up there talking about the SmartScales project. It's one that's coming your way next month, and, and I, I just see that it's important that we, that we announce what they did.
There's five districts in this county.
Okay, we're good, we're good. Any other questions, anything that's in the report?
Mr. Ashcraft, I had one on the, I said the county government continues to follow mass policy with dealing with public and non-vaccinated personnel. All of our personnel not mandated, well, what the President said, companies under 100. Are we going to think about that? That's likely something we need to look at, how many unvaccinated employees could we have?
Well, to my knowledge, we are not under that mandate. That was, I believe, Mr. Roberts, you could help me if you understand that very much, but it was more geared to the business. The business community and larger businesses. I think smaller ones that take it upon themselves, they take their own policy, whether, whether they, whether they made it mandatory or not.
Well, Ms. Ashcraft, I haven't really looked into it, so I have to get back to you.
No, I think, and that's right, but I agree, I mean, it's been a debate in schools, it's been a debate within governments, whether, you know, you want to make them mandatory for your employees.
Is the Supreme Court looking at that now?
I believe they are.
Yeah.
I believe they are, as this is intensive.
It's under court review, right?
Yeah, it's under court review, I do know that.
I was just curious, did you know how many that we have that are vaccinated, or is that not public?
Well, you can do a survey, I don't know that we've ever done one.
I think you could ask, I don't know if you could force it.
All right, thank you.
Well, once something is discovered, we call them, we probably talk.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, any other questions on the report?
Just want to comment, we've got good positive feedback on your prolific writing. It's great to keep people up to speed, and if more come online and requests, I'm sure we'll do better.
Well, that's, Mr. Chairman, I can assure you, that's not the new guy coming to town, he doesn't get burnt out. You know, I mean, I, you know, I enjoy writing, I enjoy communicating, and I think when you get the message out to people and explain it, a lot of times, it takes a lot of attention out of the, out of the conversation. And we want to continue to make sure that people can't say that they don't know. They may not always agree, or they may not always philosophically even allow themselves with the decisions that are made. But I never like to see a constituent or anybody else say that, you know, I didn't know. That's our, that's our aim, we try to get to 100%, you know, that, that, but, you know, that's our, that's our mission. That's why we have so many different ways in which people can now reach us, so. Okay, if I could turn to, well, bring up a couple matters, and then we'll lead into the, to the budget schedule. I've noticed in the past that you've had an all-day budget meeting. And only you guys would know how productive those are, I mean, I can imagine from 9:00 AM to the end of the day, that's, that's, that's pretty, that's a lot of information to process. I've seen it better if we could have a couple extra meetings and not have them as long, have them just as long as you do your regular work sessions or whatever, and we can accomplish the same thing. But if you want to meet on that, on that Friday, I think it's been suggested that that's a good Friday, we may need to move that day. But if you want to continue to have that all-day session, then we can do it. But we're, I just think there's better ways to get your input and have staff have an engagement with you without it being, you know, marshalling one right after the other, starting at 9:00 AM all the way through to 4:00, 5:00 o'clock, or what it might be. But having said that, we're proposing January 31 and, and February 22 as two budget work sessions. And there may be other discussions before then, at the regular meetings, depending on what, what might become the fourth. But those are two that we're going to dedicate, at that time, it would be 7:00 o'clock meeting. And then from the Board's input, as we have our discussions, you can share with us, do you want to hear from all Department heads? Do you want to hear from some, are the, are the ones in question? Because every year, the dynamics are different. Public safety may be an emphasis, where over here, utilities might be an emphasis. So I know you're interested in every budget, but sometimes the matters aren't, don't have the gravity as they do for others. So we can be talking about that as we move, as we move forward with the problem.
I think it ought to be available, even if it's by a phone call.
Sure, okay.
You know, them sitting in here waiting on turn, I don't see why that's necessary. Unless they have a, you know, a presentation type.
That's right.
I think, I think the two meetings that started at 7:00, I think that's a good thing. You know, I'm always speaking for myself, all of that is, and by the end of it, you know, you're not, you're just going to be old, that's just me. So I think, I think it would be more productive.
Yes, I did, something that if you want to go ahead, you would, say something.
For, would you anticipate doing half the staff on one date and the other half, or would you, would you look at perhaps a high level on first go around and then more in-depth as necessary, the second one, whichever?
What you just, the second part that you just said, that would be the. There's more than just presentations that we, that we want to bring to the Board. I mean, there's, there's explanations, there's trends, you know, we'll, we'll tell you what the revenue projection might look like. Everything that's going to go in to my presentation on March 28th, we would like to have a little bit of your input or a lot of your input before that time is done. I don't want any surprises when I, when I bring forth the budget, I want you to at least have something put in it, and a consensus among, you know, things that, that are very important to you. So the second part of, would be, would be the way to operate.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, normally, according to short, the Board's bylaws, we suggest all of our meetings are our first organizational meeting. So I'm going to propose we table this, tell them, because this is just a portion, it's really specific on the budget. I would say let us look at this more, and when we have all the members together, then put it with the entire schedule for the whole year, and then go over it maybe together. It is great that you came up and gave us this, and I appreciate that very much.
Well, thank, Mr. Greenwood, thank you, because this, that was just a proposal. On January the 10th, at your organization meeting, you'll be asked to not only improve the budget schedule, but also your regular meeting calendar for the year. So this is just information to see.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then we, we talked about the, the all-day meeting that was, that's included on your sheet right now for both your meetings, budget and regular. So we, we will talk about that more on January the 10th. Mr. Chairman, I can place my report this evening, unless members have anything else that they would like to bring out. I know there's other reports within the, within the, from the administration that I'm not going to go into detail about, but if there's any, any questions about anything.
I'm really happy to see, it's not a happy thing, but I'm glad we have the Sheriff's Activity Report in these, in the meetings now. I had no idea, Sheriff, that you guys were as busy as you are. You just don't know.
Very busy.
Anything else, sir?
Thank you.
Good evening. We have ACUP 10-21 from the Collin Park LLC. And a couple of questions came up today, and I've been working with Mr. McRoberts. And you feel best that if you could table it until your January meeting, so we can get some of these fresh things answered and bring the right information to you.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Branch.
Motion and second to any discussion?
Chair, outside of respect, the public advertises and all that, we've done, we had enough time to get that out there, re-advertises, so.
Possibly, I have talked with the applicant, and we just all listened to the Rogers on how to handle that. But there, there was a couple of questions that came up that we do need to research before we go any further with it.
2191, be specific, correct?
I'm sorry?
2191?
Yes. There's a motion that probably seconded to table the CUP 10-21.
Mr. Maureen.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Barber.
Hi.
Motion is passed, table.
Okay, so the next one for Vernon Holmes, 11-21, is a request to construct seven townhouses at 209 Winchester Road. And that is only one and a half acre parcel. Also, Mr. Holmes has a request, 12-21, to divide 193, I mean, a 20 acre parcel into four or five acre parcels, and construct 93 townhomes on Winchester Road as well. And then he also has another request, 13-21, to construct 23 townhomes at 1779 Union Hope Road, which is on 5.37 acres. I kind of ran these consecutively because we had multiple people speaking, planning mission on all three. And the two on Winchester are almost across from each other, and of course, the one on Union Hope is right across the, right around the corner. But on these, all the. But on these, all the issues are the same. With number twelve dash twenty-one, the one on Winchester, uh, that is surrounded by a wildlife preserve. All the properties are zoned to AC. The areas surrounding these properties consist of farmland with a few single-family homes. The future land use map indicates this area for agriculture. There is no public water, no public sewer available to any of the properties. Winchester Road is a narrow dirt and gravel road, it deadens, two cars cannot pass on this road. Union Hope Road and the other roads that lead in and out of the area would not be able to handle a large increase in the number of vehicles that these proposed townhouses would bring. B dot did a quick estimate, and if the townhouses were constructed just on Winchester Road, there would be an additional six to seven hundred trips daily. Like I said, the planning department has received multiple letters, emails, and phone calls, all in opposition. A petition was also given to the planning commission at their December seventh meeting. And the planning commission did recommend denial on all three of the CUP requests. Um, I do have a PowerPoint that shows, uh, the locations.
Who was the plan by the bill, water and sewer?
Um, right now, he would have to do something well. Uh, Mr. Holmes did state that B dot, I'm not going to say dot, but HRSD, uh, would upgrade their, um, plant. But I did not get, um, any notification of this from HRSD.
I didn't think I read anything.
Okay, so this is the first one at two oh nine Winchester. And you can see here, there's just a few houses on this lane. Then everything that he reads is AC.
And there were, it would be seven townhouses on that one lot?
On that one, he wanted to do seven townhouses.
And the acreage, was that five or was that?
On that one is one and a half acres. And he was a side plan of the existing, um, property. And this is what he is proposing. This is the road Winchester, and you can see it's, uh, not much of a road for heavy traffic.
And I'm guessing that state?
It is a state road almost to the, um, end.
Not unpaid, but the state road.
And this is the, the house that's on the property now.
What is that?
The house is on it now.
Yeah, well, it looks like a driveway.
That's the driveway going to the house off of Winchester.
So that would be demolished and demolished.
This is, I'm not, I listened to the planning commission hearing. Does this one specifically on this property?
No, it is not, um, this particular one, uh, that was, um, and that was another thing that came into question too. Um, that, uh, he did not have approval for one of the applicants, for one of the applicants, over the property owners, to even make application.
How many are?
Three, three different. Okay, and then the next one is, um, at the end on the right on Winchester. And he's wanting to build ninety-three townhouses as well, um, and everything around that is a wildlife preserve. Same thing, all AC. And this is the existing property. There is an old trailer on the property. That would of course need to go. And this is what he is proposing.
Now that's wetlands?
There are some wetlands on it, and you can.
I thought it looked like.
Where that purple line is, all of that is what, um, RPA and RMA areas. He would have to stay out of that, he would not be able to go into that.
Even how close he's getting down here, he can do that?
He can get close. Yeah, and this should be.
Don't look like it all that, but.
Yeah, this should be his. This should be his, his buffer here, I'm sorry.
Magic.
So.
Way down here on this corner, is, is it rooming there? It looks like he's right on top of it. On his bottom hole.
Yeah, right there.
Right in there.
It's, this is the road. It's hard to tell with this if he would even meet it, so.
Actually, this is the Winchester Road area, Union Hope last week, and there's.
The, the elevation on the property are very steep, especially going toward the creek.
This doesn't, this doesn't, the, the RPA is the area where it goes onto the creek and move up the swamp here.
That just shows the way, that's the sign, but that is like going back out to the main road. Um, you can see, very narrow.
This was not recommended, correct?
None of the three were recommended, well. Same, still part of Winchester.
Is that the candidate here tonight, if he wasn't at the plan?
Um, I don't think so.
What was it, I'm sorry?
Said was the applicant here tonight, because he wasn't at the plan. He's there, yeah. And he wasn't really very enthusiastic about it, but all he just said, I've accepted the decision of the board, and that was it. Stayed cased and pushed and.
Just in my opinion, water and sewer and the rain, I mean, I don't see.
Well, don't we have to have a public?
Yeah, yeah, I was just making a comment.
Do you want to finish? Okay. It's actually, I know, it's in your packets as well. Um, that is going to the end, and that will also, and the, uh, the end down there is the end of state maintenance.
It's dead end.
It just, well, it goes into the wildlife preserve area.
We'll tell.
But the turnaround would be in the townhouse parking lot, I guess, right?
Yeah, there really is no turnaround, it just goes straight into, um, like, an area that's posted, uh, no trespassing.
The gentleman, uh, I guess before us, uh, if there's no objections, right before we're here and bump the three conditional use permits, public hearings into one.
You can't do that. Well, thank you, Andrew Kelly, because we couldn't do it, since there are actually public hearings for three different.
I, I think it would be twinger and better and more defensible this toll, if, if individually.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't think it'd be legal, no. I think if it's clearly explained, I think you can combine them into one, as long as the record is clear, but I don't recommend.
Let me ask, can we do the public hearing on all three, but in our decision, identify? Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be fine, but again, I think the public hearing needs to be very clear that it's open to all three.
No, I'm good with that.
Yes, and we did that at the planning commission too, because that way, if the sum of payments were the same for all three, so if we said they had different ones, they wanted to speak differently than what they said in the first one, they just sort of bound them together, you know, saves them.
I believe everybody that was at the planning mission and the letters and the emails that we received were for all three conferences.
And what I looked at earlier today, they were all exactly the same. Anything else, Ms. Graham?
Um, I have the one for seventeen seventy-nine, uh, Union Hope. Uh, this is the five point three seven acres, and it is right around the corner from Winchester. This is the, um, existing plot on the property. And that is what's proposed. And that is the property now. And that's Union Hope, as you can see, that is also a narrow route.
Just, I'm curious, yeah, this is in the early stages, and he probably hadn't, he didn't even purpose this, just pull it to see if it was free, right?
He's proposing, uh, public sewer, HRSD. Well, like I said, I did not get any information from HRSD, but that was the case. And it's a pretty good distance from the, uh, HRSD plant.
And he was counting on an expansion, I think, right? Right, okay.
Would that be incumbent on HRSD, or is Kelly on some of that, how does that work?
Well, looking at it, he would have to obtain multiple easements to even run lines there. I don't think that is something HRSD is going to take on at this time.
And it would be on them, I think, if they're taking that on it. Unless we just voluntarily, and I wouldn't be in a favor of that.
Go ahead and open the public hearing. We will, uh, hear comments from the any of the audience, I don't believe there's anyone online that's requested. So with that, uh, rules apply still, three minutes for individual, five minutes for group. And open the public conference period at this time.
And should they identify which ones?
Yes, if you identify yourself where you're from.
No, I mean, they want this, this is talking about.
Yeah.
My name is Robert Gray, I'm chief of the Plumaki Indian Drive, I live on sixty-four Layland and Road on Reservation, Second District. I'm here to state on behalf of the tribe, our opposition to all three conditional use permits, uh, related to the development, uh, primarily because, uh, Union Help Road, Winchester Road dumps onto Union Hope, and that's a primary ingress, uh, egress for reservation residents. Current zoning ordinances require the townhouse developments be designed to promote harmonious relationships with the surrounding properties. This development will completely alter the landscape, use case, and the daily lives of individuals residing in an extremely rural area of King William. The traffic increase created by this development will create dangerous driving conditions on rural secondary roads not designed for this level of traffic. This development will place a burden on volunteer emergency services. The lack of a public water system will negatively impact firefighting efforts. And lastly, uh, if this development were approved, we would anticipate environmental and possibly historic preservation issues. And the tribe would exercise its sovereign rights, uh, to consult and contend our opposition with the applicable federal and state agencies. That's all I have, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Burnetball of Rock Jackson, and I represent Old Town LLC, uh, which is the abutting neighbor along the southern boundary of the properties. We are here to, uh, speak in opposition to all three, uh, of the CUPs. Um, Old Town has asked me to, uh, share, uh, their request that you deny these CUPs because, uh, this area is the agricultural conservation district. Uh, the Old Town LLC property, uh, has been used, uh, since nineteen sixty-two for purely agricultural and conservation uses. It's grown to nineteen hundred contiguous acres, uh, that are south of this property, on which, uh, while we do do hunting, um, at that site, four hundred acres are a no-shoot migratory preserve. Uh, so I think that's important to, to share on some of the other areas. Uh, we also oppose the wounded warriors and, uh, boy scouts. Uh, all of this area abuts the CUP properties, uh, to the south. Uh, the CUP is on twenty-seven acres, and it's about a hundred units, uh, with no significant buffer. Uh, and most importantly, especially for the uses that are in the, uh, the adjacent agricultural conservation uses. Uh, there's no, um, there's no ability, uh, to locate a wildlife border, which is the custom now, uh, for any development in a, a rural, uh, or agricultural area in the Commonwealth. So you're seeing that, uh, as a custom across, uh, the entire state. Uh, we have not seen that proposed here. Uh, again, we would, we did note, um, the interesting testimony of some of the family members that they, they, uh, that they were heir owners, um, at the, uh, planning commission. I don't represent them, but we just asked the board to, um, take note of that. Uh, thank you so much.
Who do you get, what? My name is Michael Quarles, I'm resident of King William County, uh, physical address one seventy-one Winchester Road, two three oh eight six, King William County. Uh, I'm here with my wife and my daughter and my cousin and my friend and some of my neighbors. We are here to contest all three of the CUPs. And, uh, we was here on December the seventh, and our positions have not changed. And we're all in agreement that we do not want these, uh, townhouses to be built on, uh, your, uh, Winchester Road. And I spoke the last time, and I'm happy to think differently, but I'm, but I'm saying now, I'd just like to read this to you all, right? We contest in a bold dissent request because it would create a nuisance in our area and increase the density and the overall population and the neighborhood. And interrupt the people moving in and out would generate a lot of traffic on Winchester Road, Union Hope Road, and corporate. We no longer have peace and quiet, this is obviously divorced and jolt. Then, the infrastructure, the services, and rules cannot support this kind of change at this time. Change from single-family residences to multifamily residences with changes that damage to our neighborhood. We would be overwhelmed and inundated by these changes that did not happen gradually, but sadly, not having the ample time to acclimate to the change. It is possible that the value of our properties would increase, we would have to have it through a system. And my concern is, would we have to connect to it, causing an additional unwanted deal? It would also burden our shift department and volunteer fire department, police and service, so many people. The second reason I'd like to address is conditional use permit twelve dash twenty-one, third two, on the third two boards. Advocate Randall Holmes Jr., wants to build ninety-four units here. This property is also off of Winchester Road and is adjacent to a wildlife refletting. And to build townhouses on this property can have an effect on the wildlife environment. So once again, you have this, this, once again, to have this many people living in this area would be devastating. The third I might like to address is CUP thirteen dash twenty-one on the board. Advocate Randy Holmes Jr., twenty-three units, yes. Again, this situation is one even same, too many people, too much traffic, lack of property, and that conducive to the neighborhood. A total of two hundred forty-eight family units will be devastated to our, our, yeah, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Quarles, I'm not a resident of, uh, King William County, but I am attached, uh, to Quarles' property. Uh, my statement is this, and question is this. To be an actor, shouldn't you be the owner of a property to try to get a conditional use permit? He's not on, he's not even a direct, Mr. Holmes is not an owner, he's not even a direct descendant of family. I am, I'm my grandmother's, uh, victim. I am, I'm my grandmother's, uh, that is my grandmother, Michael, and he's a grandson, it's like me. And, and Jean, another cousin who's there. We all first cousins. It should, if anything, apply for footage property for either of these properties, just about. Should come through us first, again, he's done this behind our back. That doesn't sound good, and. For this board, you even not even question that. At least I hope you do. And see fit not to allow this to happen. This is basically done being dummy legal. In my words and my book.
Evening. My name is James Thomas Brown. I live in eighteen oh nine Union Hope Road. King William, Virginia. And my property, you own it. The quarrels and roasts. I do not see this structure sound of buildings, houses there. You don't have the. Roads are not capable for, you don't have emergency vehicles up in that room. Do not have the police department take care of all of the people that are coming here. I say no, totally, poor idea, because it's not feasible. The roads right now and the graves and stuff comes across the road, there are the cones right there for my house. This farm equipment comes up through here, it's unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? And still no one on, on the Zoom call.
Nobody signed up.
Okay, with that, closing the public hearing.
Mr. Chair. I make a motion that we deny resolution twenty one dash ninety two, C U P eleven twenty one.
So.
Motion made promptly seconded, any discussion on C U P ten twenty one?
Oh, just quick, with that recommendation, it was not recommended about planning, the road conditions, water and soil. And objections from everybody that showed up today, firing the law enforcement. It's just not feasible really with this setup and lack of ownership looked like.
Mr. Green, I do have a question. He had three individual applications. Did, did he actually pay twenty five hundred dollars each one or?
Jim and I would agree, and also that would be a burden to the school system as well, all those children, extra children that might be moving into these places would be a real burden for the school system that we have now.
Because it, should it be a fundamental requirement that an applicant physically owns the property?
We are in the process of changing the applications, while we have an applicant signature line as well as an owner's signature line.
Are the listed owners alive?
Uh, from what I understand, uh, girlfriend, the grandmother, she's no longer. Her, her grandson that just moved, he's been paying the taxes for the last fifteen years.
I heard him say, and that's one, the other reason. But again, that's all I have for the motion.
Just to clarify as well, the resolution is denying the conditional use permit.
And the resolution.
Right. So, Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Jim, I'd like to make a motion on resolution twenty one dash ninety three, C U P twelve twenty one to vote in the council. Oh, sorry, you're right.
Have a second?
Sorry. I didn't know you finished.
Motion made promptly seconded, any discussion on resolution twenty one dash ninety two, C U P eleven dash twenty?
Same statement before.
Just to clarify, he sure, because eleven twenty one is one we just did for twenty one ninety two.
So, did Bill make a motion for us?
No, Steve did.
No further discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
And if no one else wants to do it, I make a motion that we deny resolution twenty one dash ninety four, C U P thirteen dash twenty one.
Motion made promptly seconded, any discussion?
Same thing.
Okay. Ms. Branch.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
I'd also like to thank everybody for coming, like, thank all the family members that actually spoke tonight. I'm thinking, I've probably went to high school with some of your relatives. Sorry you had to go through this, but also COVID is exploding again, I heard this afternoon. Positivity rate in the ten years, like fourteen point three. It's jumped like three percent since Christmas, so everybody be safe.
Thank you everybody for coming. Thank the family. It's always nice to have a family step up and speak. Thank you all. Because my parents have lived, that grew up on COVID, so I'm y'all's laborers too, so thanks for coming and thanks everybody for. This looks like, you know, I don't assume it's messed up, but nobody's on for some reason. That looks like a lot of people there. Wanted to thank staff for everything y'all have done with all these things, sharing with Ram and Chris. And welcome our new county administrator, Mr. Ashcraft. Thanks to all the people for coming tonight. I hope everybody had a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, it minimizes.
Mr. Adams.
All right. Uh, I just wish everybody a Happy New Year and. Just one thing, as we go into the budget process, we got to remember now, I know we put in a lot at station one and I have no problems with that. We got to remember that we kept stations at West Point, Niagara Hick and Waukegan that we need to support and remember they're still active. And station one cannot cover this entire county. But again, COVID, I told you earlier, you know. Yeah, I haven't cheated my sister out, she's still in the hospital, but. I didn't know she wasn't vaccinated. It, it don't make sense to me, but some people just have. A, something against taking that because you don't know what's in it, but. I don't know, I've seen that part as a drink mixture and they didn't really know what was in it, so I don't know what to do with this.
It's hard to communicate remotely. I'm getting it from my nephew who has it also, he's at home. She's in the hospital, she's the only one in the hospital. No, no, actually that part, the oxygen part is good, which is a good sign. She's just extremely weak, she's somewhat out of her head as far as thinking clearly. She knows where she's at and why she's there, but. Yeah, hopefully it's just going to take time and she was extremely weak.
How long has she been in the hospital?
About a week now, well, she was in there for.
Well, again, thanks staff for putting this together tonight, a lot of hard work. Hopefully everyone had a great Christmas vacation and look forward to the New Years. A nice twenty twenty two, and I wanted to give out to the twenty twenty one.
All right, we made your motion for the close session. Uh, I make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we convene a closing session in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A one. Of Code Virginia to consider a personal matter involving the form of individuals, boards and commissioners.
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Greenwood. Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
It should be a real short session. Meeting back in session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve S R one.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
I'd like to approve resolution twenty one dash nine, probably twenty, I'll go away to the local planning district commission to term ending. December thirty first, no, it's a new term ending. December thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Very good. So. Motion made promptly seconded, any discussion?
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
And finally this evening, do I, I take a motion to?
Oh, sure.
What did we say?
I thought we were going, hold off on both of them.
Oh.
And discuss it in a work session.
Are we holding on to the package for that, or twenty one ninety one?
I don't see any reason, you have to turn that in this thing? Our package, I was running the, the, the signal. Okay, once again.
Mr. Chairman. I might, I might ask a question. Do you want to read this, the thing the committee brought back as the work session in January? Obviously, the sooner the better, if you don't do, to begin to.
We can go ahead and announce.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've got all the names.
I'll go ahead and announce, uh, for first district, Mr. Reverend Palmer. Second district was Eugene Hammond, Eugene Hammond. Third district, Mr. Greenwood is going to discuss with the advocates, Mr. Adams. Fourth district is Reverend Collins. Fifth district is Ms. Beth Wagner. And when and where to be determined, Mr. Ashcraft will be putting that together and notifying the individuals. Any other discussion?
You want to make a formal appointment at a later time or do you want to do that tonight?
Let's do that. I'm sorry.
Make sure. Later, I'll make sure that this.
We'll make a, we'll make a part of it, again, we're.
Great. All right. Do you have a motion to the chair?
So, move. I'll say that.
Okay. Move to the side of this, Ms. Branch.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.